Okay, today is Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. I call the village board meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Feichter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
All board members are present. Tonight, we have the invocation from Pastor Tab at the Prince of Peace United Methodist Church. Then after the invocation, we'll do the pledge allegiance with our guests helping. So let's first do the invocation. Pastor, if you would, please. Everyone, please rise. Now, hang on a second, Pastor, if you don't mind, please. Are the scouts coming in?
I think they're just gonna listen. They're gonna do a tour while you read the mayor's emails.
So they're gonna see the whole village, state of Illinois, the United States during my speech?
They'll be back at the end of the report.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Pastor, oh wait, they're coming in.
The speaker's on.
We'll give them a second, Pastor. I want them to have a chance to hear you too. Think about it, Chief. Tour or seeing the mayor and the trustees? There's no comparison.
They can do both.
Okay, they're all in? Okay, Pastor, it's all yours, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Johnson, village trustees, all village officials, business leaders, scouts and their leaders, honored guests, our veterans. One who you allow to celebrate one hundred years today. To the members, families, and friends of this village, let us pray. Dear loving and Creator God, we come today to bow our heads and open this meeting in prayer. Please accept our thanks for this day and all its blessings. We ask that you guide and direct this meeting, its leaders, and actions, that you would bless our time together today. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and to serve others. Our prayer today is that your will be done through this meeting. Take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can. Steer our intentions to align with your will. Blanket us with your peace today, oh Lord. Please keep us physically safe from all hurt, harm, and danger, and guard our hearts and minds from all evil. Keep love at the forefront of our minds today and the guiding light for all we set out to accomplish and celebrate. Thank you and bless this wonderful, exceptional community called Elk Grove Village. We ask all of these things in the master's name. Amen.
Amen. We have our veterans here today. If they want us to lead this, then the pledge allegiance, the flag's right here to my right. Gentlemen, it's all yours.
Cover. Hands up. Forward. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Folks, please be seated.
Oh, the pastor's walking away. Chocolates?
Oh, God, thank you. Pastor, I'm sorry. Thank God for trusting Prochnow. Get over here. I apologize. You know, tomorrow, I can start collecting social security if I want to. That's what I keep thinking about. That's right.
Tomorrow's your birthday?
I'll be sixty-two.
Oh, happy birthday, Mayor. I did not know.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Aw, isn't that cute?
It's very interesting. When it comes from a person of God, that means a lot to me. As we get older, that means even more, too. So, yeah, I can collect social security tomorrow if I wanted to. I'm not going to, but I could. Okay, with that said, we move on now to the approval of the minutes of January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two as submitted and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Feichter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record see unanimous approval. Move on now to mayor and trustees' report. I know we have a couple presentations. One, we're gonna do a swearing-in first, and then we'll do the recognition of John. Before we get to that, just a couple of quick items. We did have our first parade meeting the other night. I know it's a separate item, but we had it last night. So the parade's still moving on. We'll be announcing probably next board meeting who the grand marshal will be and the theme for this year's parade. Looking forward to that. Then also, on February fifth, we had coffee with the board, and that was probably by far the biggest crowd we've ever had. It was continuous people, and it went very well. Meeting room E, I think, because we now have Josh Donutts and everything back. That's why people are turning out.
They were all gone.
Well, they weren't leaving, that's for sure.
Yeah, and they were pretty much all gone by the end of the day, so that went very well. With that said, I only have one item tonight to talk about, and that is that we had a piece of history that occurred on, I'll give you the date. On Friday, February fourth, we had a bit of history. On Friday, February fourth, as one knows, the main paper in our local area is the Daily Herald. This is the first newspaper in over two years that the entire front section, there was not one story, not one story, on coronavirus. Not one. Yes.
Yay.
That, to me, I'm saving this, because as I've talked about many times, and just briefly, I say again, it's crazy what's going on. Absolutely crazy. We all saw that there was a court ruling down in Saginaw County saying that the governor's mandate for masks in schools had no validity. He exceeded his authority in doing that. And I've said from the beginning, this is a country of laws, not a country of mandates. Individuals don't run this country. That's monarchies in other countries. In America, we work by democracy through law. And I'm hoping now we're finally getting back to where we should be. And common sense, hopefully, is gonna prevail. We talked about that last time. Common sense, common sense, common sense. Good news from the hospital today. We're down to twenty-nine people with COVID and Lexin Brothers. Remember, back on January fourteenth, they had ninety-seven. A year ago, they had a hundred and twenty-four. So we've come a long way. We're getting past this pandemic. We need to get back. And I'm very proud that back in October twenty-sixth, we went mask optional. Still working. We didn't fall off the earth. We've not enforced the vaccination ID requirement. We didn't fall off the earth. We got the same numbers going everywhere else. You know, if the mask mandate was so great, why did Illinois have one of the worst numbers of cases? They should have one of the best numbers. So we need to get moving on, and the biggest thing that's bothering me the most, all this, and we've talked to the board about this, all that, is what it's doing for kids. The harm it's doing to kids. They had a person, real quick here, they had a person in the article here about a young, a lady that teaches young kids about reading and writing, or talking, I mean, here. Kim Kowal, an interventin', inter, you don't have that big word.
Interloper.
No, 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 no. Intervention? What's that word?
Interventionalist.
Okay, that's a person that works with speaking, helping kids talk. And she's part of the district's, uh, school district, U forty-six, Illinois Early Park Learning Center in Elgin. And she said the young children she works with are suffering setbacks to their speech development and social, emotional learning because of the mask mandate. Literally, "We can't hear the kids talk," Kowal said. They have, they don't have a voice. The families don't have a voice. We can't see the reactions. And, you know, the problem is, I know we're trying to do what's good, but we could be doing way more harm than good by far. We need to get back. We need to get going, and it's gotta stop. And it's scary what's going on. And Johns Hopkins, probably one of the most renowned and respected institutions in America, that's actually, they're quoted by everyone. If you're liberal, conservative, Republican, Democrat, Communist, whatever, they all always reference Johns Hopkins. Considered one of the best. And the reports they've been putting out lately, unbelievable. They say the damage that's been done by all the shutdowns and all the other things going on is, the harm is far greater than COVID ever caused. Far greater. And I mean, this is by one of the most respected institutions, and that's why we need to get moving on. It's time. It's time. It's gonna be here forever. I'm telling you now, I'll be the first one to take. Next October, new virus coming from COVID, another variation. In February next year, another variation. It's here forever. It's no different than the flu. Effects a little harder, affects your respiratory, a little harder on, but we protect the vulnerable people. Vulnerable people, wear masks. That's what we say. If you wanna wear masks, God bless you. We'll give you one if you want one. You know, vaccinations, there's way. We'll protect you. But we gotta move on. I'm worried about those people right back there. All those young scouts back there. That's my biggest concern. And I, yep, raise your hand, guys. I saw what's done to my grandkids. I know what's done to our kids, so we're worried about it. So again, let's celebrate. Maybe we're finally moving on. The courts are speaking. They're now saying, again, the scariest thing we've seen out of this, and, you know, I respect the governor, but mandates are not how we govern America. We're governed by law. And the courts rule, that's the law. We follow it. We abide by it. And we gotta stop this other stuff. Scary part is, the governor's already said, masks may be coming back. Even if we stop them, they may come back. We gotta get on, folks. So, matter of fact, if you go to the Lexin Brothers Hospital, who said they just went there? Chief?
This morning.
This morning? They won't let you wear a cloth mask in. You have to wear one of their N ninety-five masks. Why? As the CDC said, cloth masks are about ninety-five percent ineffective. Cloth masks basically are not effective at all. Even the CDC said that. Lexin Brothers won't let you in with a cloth mask. They'll make you wear N ninety-five. So all these years, these two years, everyone's wearing cloth masks everywhere. It's a savior. Not doing anything, folks. So again, we gotta get going. So that's it.
What?
That's it.
Can you people come back next week?
We've got some, uh, some events going on. First, if it's okay with the veterans, I wanna swear on a new member of our zoning board tonight, if that's okay. That way, when we get done with John, we can look together for pictures, have time to do all that. So let me have, uh, ask Steve Rowley to come on down, if you would. Jen, do you have a, the oath?
That would be a no.
Okay, that's fine. I normally don't read. I'm gonna, I'm nervous now. I haven't read the oath, I bet you, in fifteen years. So I'm gonna try to do it by memory, and let's see how I do. Fair enough. As everyone knows in town, we have different boards and commissions that serve the community. They're the people that actually do the true legwork for the village. They help the board immensely. We have a plan commission. We have a zoning board. We have a parade committee we just talked about. We have youth committee. All these groups help make the community better. They volunteer their time to help out Grove. So we had an opening on the zoning board, and Steve volunteered to serve on there. And we cannot thank him enough. Been part of this community for thirty-four years?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years. And his kids grew up here, and he's embedded in this community. Lives on the west side of the village. And he's volunteered now to give back to the community by serving on the zoning board. He's got a pip of a case coming up, too, very soon, so that'd be interesting. So we're gonna swear him in tonight, then we'll let Steve introduce himself after he gets sworn in, tell a little bit about his family. I know his wife's here and stuff, so hang in there. Keep your fingers crossed. Especially for Jen.
She has confidence.
If you can, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Rowley.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to position of?
Zoning Board of Appeal.
Zoning Board of Appeal.
In the village of Elk Grove Village?
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage?
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States?
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Zoning Board of Appeal.
Zoning Board of Appeal.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Not bad for a senior man that can collect social security, so that's good.
Tomorrow.
Steve, why don't you introduce yourself, your wife, your family a little bit? Tell us a little about yourself.
Wasn't prepared for this, but my name is Steve Rowley. We've lived in the village for thirty-one years. My wife Teresa is in the crowd today here. And we have two grown adult daughters who also have homes in the village. Grew up here. Kids went to Conant, not Elk Grove, but, you know, it's part of the village. And I worked for a candy and cookie company, so have a nice, sweet job, as they say. And really enjoy living in the village. I wanted to give it an opportunity to give back, because it's, it's been such a great place to raise our family and, and then continue to see our family grow here in the village, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Appreciate it. This is for you. What we like to give out, they're dark chocolates, because my heart doctor said I can eat them, and the village logo. So we got some here for you tonight to take back, and it's for you, because she's gonna be gone some nights. This makes up for it.
Yeah, I don't get enough candy already. Thank you. But chocolate's good. We don't make chocolate, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations. Give him a hand again. Okay, so Terry, who do we want to have come on down for John's thing?
Commander's not here, so, uh... Senior vice is here, Al Breach.
Come on, Al. Come on down. Tonight, we're doing a special recognition for a gentleman who is celebrating his hundredth birthday, which is phenomenal in that fact, but also gave so much to his community and been part of the community. And you don't see that very often. And especially young people, when you hear the history that this gentleman's gone through, and he is one of the reasons, as all of these veterans are, and many, we have this country we love so much, a country of laws. Let's remember that, a country of laws, not mandates. And so we'd like to recognize him on his special birthday and everything else. So John, if you wanna come on, join us? Now, John, you got some family here tonight, right?
Yes.
Come on, folks, come on up with him. Yeah, come on up. Whatever family members. Come on. This is all for everyone. Come on. Everyone recognizes John. He's been in the village a long time. So did you wanna say a few words first before? Are you sure?
You speak much better than I do.
I don't know about that. I can do, I can do swearing-ins good, but, okay. So tonight, we're gonna honor John with a special proclamation on behalf of the community, and it's a very special night. Because again, not only is he celebrating a century come this Thursday, but also so much he gave to the village. So bear with me while I read this proclamation. It's a little lengthy, but in a hundred years, it's expected to be a little lengthy. Proclamation honoring John on his hundredth birthday, where John was born on February tenth, nineteen twenty-two. Grew up on the near west side of the city, where he attended Crane Technical High School and University of Illinois prior to joining the United States Army in February of nineteen forty-three during World War Two. John served in the eighty-sixth Division, the Black Hawk Division, in Germany, Austria, and the Philippines until February nineteen forty-six, where he worked with the Chicago and Northwestern Railroad until he retired in nineteen eighty-two. Whereas John married his wife Agnes in September nineteen fifty-six, had four children, Jean Linton, Nancy Rodwall, Deborah Tokarich, and John Tokarich. John and Agnes moved the family to Elk Grove Village in August nineteen sixty-seven. And today, they have thirteen grandchildren and more than twenty great and great-great-grandchildren to love. And whereas John is a founding member of the VFW Post nine-two-eight-four, yay. He's represented the Post at numerous annual VFW conventions, helped run Bingo Nights for many years, held a number of leadership positions, including color guard commander and three ti, is it three or four time? Four-time post commander. And whereas John, his wife Agnes, retired to Florida in nineteen eighty-four, but returned to Illinois in nineteen ninety-seven. Now, that could just be by coincidence. That's the first year I got elected mayor. So it makes sense that he'd wanna come back. And Elk Grove Village in two thousand. John and Agnes were married almost fifty-six years until Agnes passed away in August of two thousand twelve. John continued to serve and lead the VFW, organizing support for village parades, Memorial Day ceremonies, Veteran Day commemorations, and local elementary schools. And whereas John loves to travel and take his family on many summer vacation trips throughout the United States. And John has many interests, such as building ship and airplane models, playing cards, solving crossword and jigsaw puzzles, fishing, reading, taking walks around the neighborhood. And whereas John, that one's not perfect, is a White Sox fan, and also enjoys watching the Chicago Bears. And John participated in the Honor Flight to the World War Two Memorial in May of two thousand eleven and was honored by the Chicago Blackhawks on February eleventh, two thousand fifteen, as an Hon. Ice Veteran for the National Anthem. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and all the board of trustees in the village of Elk Grove Village, do hereby proclaim February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, to be John Tokarich Day, in which the village of Elk Grove Village, Cook County, and wish him a very happy hundredth birthday. John, congratulations. All of that is for you. Did you wanna say a couple of words? Would you like to? No, it's up to you. We can always use more. Why don't you say thank you? Why don't you introduce your family here? Do you wanna do that?
Let me hold that for you, and you come to the microphone.
Come here, John.
My, I don't even know their names.
So, so I'm John's son, John W. Tukarwich, and thank you all for, for coming tonight, VFW members. With us, with us tonight is my wife Katie, my sister Nancy, brother-in-law Bruce, my daughters Lauren and Nick. Again, thank you all very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. John, thank you. Yes. One thing I'd like to mention real quick, please be seated. John was fighting over in Europe, and then when the war ended in Europe, he wasn't done. Came back and went over to fight in the Pacific. I mean, talk about giving your time and sacrificing behalf of your country. That's impressive, that, um, that happened. So again, all the veterans here, and John and all the rest, we can't thank you all enough. And I want these young people to realize the sacrifice these guys made and women made for you to make sure you had a place you could be scouts and enjoy the freedoms we have in America, that came at a price, a price for guys like John and all the rest of them. So we can't thank you enough, John. It's a very special day. It means a lot. Chris?
Mayor, did you wanna mention all the fabulous honor that goes with it, the day?
Oh, just so you know, John, for the next still four and a half hours, the village is yours. The chief, the chief can't do a thing.
We did a lot of work to do.
Yep. The chief can't do a thing to you. You're free. I've already signed any, um, what is that?
Traffic violation?
No. Pardons. I already pardoned you of anything you could do wrong. I've already signed it. So for the next four and a half hours, you do whatever you want, my friend. Okay? Enjoy. Yeah, we're gonna do a group picture. So if the board wants, come on down. All the VFW guys, come on down. We'll do a picture in front of the dais here. And given the fact that we got a professional photographer here, so we're good to go. So let's take them on out there. Folks, the family too. Come on up.
Just in the middle.
And don't worry, there's chocolates for everyone before you go. Trustees, come on down. No, no, no. Come on down. No, the board should come. Come on.
How about we stand behind you?
Stand up.
Go stand back.
Stand back here. We're just gonna stand back here. This way. Come on, Georgio. Yeah, there you go. Okay, do you just sit next? John can do it. You can't. He's got four hours.
This is being our newsletter coming up, too, next one. Big centerfold. You guys in the... Yep. I'm standing on the chair.
Does this mean that John can make us mayor?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, I heard it. It's your chair.
I heard a lot of chocolates. First off, John?
Surely you're kidding. What's that?
Everyone's true. So thank you very much. This is a little bit younger.
Change of hands.
I did, I, you know.
You put a baker's head on, no one in trouble.
Jen, is this for, you want me to get to the other?
I'm not calling you one tomorrow. Hey, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. You're gonna need to do that next four hours, I mean, breaking all the laws. So you were fire chief there?
Marv.
How long?
Marv. I retired in old four.
Four? Oh, okay. Well, Kenny Reon? Lindy?
Oh, we're good. Yeah, we did good.
Yeah, I know all those guys.
Hey, you're lucky. You're one lucky girl.
Actually, I bowled with Kenny a lot. I think, I, did you know Rusty Golds from, uh, Willie Madison?
You had the oath.
We all bowled together. Kenny Reon, Rusty, he became... I remember that. And we called Arlen here one time, and he came through, yeah. Oh, these guys from Elk Grove. Oh, yeah? Oh. Wow. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Hey, congrats. We're gonna do our best. She does the dishes, so.
Gosh, look at those stars just shining, just glistening. By the way, I have now seen over the past couple of months, three chiefs with five stars. All of a sudden, it's become like Vogue. You see it, you know, in the circle on their collars. That's the new...
The only thing...
Sorry, you gotta listen to Trustee Schmidt, we gotta listen.
I think the only thing the military gives out really five stars is during a war.
Yeah, they haven't had a five-star general since, I think, World War Two.
Yeah, since Eisenhower.
Yeah, so, okay, move on now to the trustees' report. Wow, hear the applause? Okay, uh, with that said, Trustee Schmidt. No report. Now you're gonna hear applause. Okay, Trustee Faktor.
Well, thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate John on his hundredth birthday, and I think it's wonderful that both the VFW, the, the gentleman and the ladies auxiliary, we have representation from the ladies auxiliary, turned out to congratulate him, and what a wonderful evening, and I'm sure he'll continue with his celebrating. You know, John was, when I started the Memorial Day ceremony back in nineteen ninety-eight, John was my first master of ceremonies, and he did it, he did it for several years, several years, and he, he ran a tight ship. He ran a tight ship, and, and it's so good to see him, and I said, he was a little cranky sometimes. I talked to his son earlier this week, and I said, eh, is he still a little cranky? He goes, oh, yeah. But you know what? When you get to be a hundred, you deserve it.
You have a right.
Absolutely. Uh, just a reminder that we're still having the indoor farmers market every first and third Saturday at the Christus Victor Church across, on Arlington Heights Road, across from the theaters. It runs from eight to one PM on Saturday. Um, we have some produce, different vendors, um, some bakers, some, um, meat purveyor, quite a few different, and some new tables are coming in each week, so, um, you should check it out. It's from eight until one, like I said, the first and third Saturday of the month, and helps support the community. I also don't want to forget to really wish a happy birthday to Trustee Listener, who had his birthday last week, Trustee Faktor, whose birthday was yesterday, and Mayor Johnson, whose birthday is tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, all right, just, just, um, recapping my, uh, snow shovel, pardon me?
No, no, I'm saying it was great to have all three of them together. It's like President's Day.
It was, yes.
Should we sing Happy Birthday?
No.
No.
Come on, Chris, keep going.
Um, just to recap my, uh, s- snow shoveling talk from the last board meeting, again, we've had some additional snow, and people have done a really good job, and I was especially touched when I had announced that, uh, two of our trustees were Good Samaritans, and had helped their neighbors, and someone actually listened to me. I was driving home last week after it had snowed, and I had, I had shoveled in the morning, and I was planning on coming home later that afternoon to, uh, finish up and do it again, and I was driving down the street, and I saw a man in my driveway shoveling my driveway. And I pulled up, and it was my neighbor from across the street, and he said, I just watched you on the board meeting. He said, I want to be a Good Samaritan.
Why don't you give my address?
I, I can only hope that other people watched the, the last board meeting and got the same idea, because it was such a nice gesture. Clearly, I could have done it myself, but it was such a nice pleasant surprise to come home almost at six o'clock in the cold and the dark and see that that was already done, so.
So you did this so some people would go and shovel your driveway?
Little did I know the impact it would have. No, that is not why. And, again, as I promised, um, Trustee, Trustee Zarnik, before she retired, I will, I will continue to announce her scholarship. There are eight one thousand dollar awards available to Elk Grove residents who are graduating from high school this year. The awards are the Zarnik Heffren Scholarships, named after Frank Zarnik and Jim Heffren, who are both very important people within our community, and very concerned about the youth in our community. Applications are available on the village website, elkgrove.org, as well as on the zarnikgolf.com website. Frank Zarnik and Jim Heffren supported the youth of Elk Grove with their work on the Elk Grove Park Board, and now through this memorial scholarship program. Please also save the date for the annual golf outing, which will be held on Friday, August fifth. This is the only fundraiser for the scholarship program. Deadline for applications is April twenty-second. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Faktor. Trustee Listener?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Staying on the birthday theme for one more, uh, I know Trustee Faktor was yesterday, and you're tomorrow, and, uh, today is John Della, CEO of Enclave's birthday.
Yes, it is.
So, three of you right together, and I was gonna talk a little bit about the, uh, uh, the neighborhood watch meeting, but I was coming in remote, and there was a little glitch with the computer system. But, uh, there was a, I think about nine people online when I signed off, but, uh, computers will do that to you all the time, so no matter how much you rehearse. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Faktor?
Yes, the Community Character Coalition, along with the Friends of the Library, are, uh, offering this year three two thousand dollar scholarships. Um, they, the scholarship applications are due on April nineteenth, and they'll be presented to the recipients on May twenty-fourth at our board meeting. They can get their scholarship applications from their college scholarship counselors, or from Kathy Hahn in the, um, it's, the manager's office here in Elk Grove Village. Uh, those are the places you can get the applications, so I suggest, don't wait to the last minute, get them in. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Faktor. Trustee Frankie?
No report.
Trustee Miller?
No report.
Move on now to the Accounts Payable Warrant, our first ones for January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I move approval of the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two Accounts Payable Warrant in the amount of four million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and five dollars and thirty-six cents.
We have motion by Trustee Listener, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Trustee Faktor. Mr. Romo, is that your last paycheck?
I thought that was Mr. Nekka.
Oh, okay, I was just checking, I want you, 'cause I know you're getting close, I was just making sure. Um, with that said, um, Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Faktor?
Yes.
Motion passes six to nothing. We now have Accounts Payable Warrant for February eighth, twenty twenty-two.
I move approval of the February eighth, twenty twenty-two Accounts Payable Warrant in the amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
We have motion by Trustee Listener, second by Trustee Faktor, and without objection, record the vote, as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. We run now to Concerned Item Items, and tonight we have items A as in almost, and I as in incomplete. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have motion by Trustee Frankie, second by Trustee Listener. Any staff or board members questions tonight? Anybody in the audience wish to address the items on Concerned Item?
Mayor, I have a question on B, for the, uh, for the ambulance. Have they built this thing? 'Cause I just heard a story on, uh, the news that Ford is shutting down their plants because they don't have the parts. I'm just curious if they have already, uh, got this thing going.
Deputy Chief Gack, do you have it?
Uh, it has not been built yet. We will order it, and the lead time is significant. Uh, our attempt is to, uh, A, get in line, because we're, our, one we're replacing is almost twenty years old at this point, and also to beat a cost increase of almost ten percent that's coming effective immediately.
I hope they build it soon, because I know that there's problems with new cars right now, new vehicles.
Just to confirm, we've ordered the ambulance, this is just confirming.
Yeah, but it hasn't been built yet.
It has not been built.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's the same thing we did with all the trucks. We ordered a bunch of trucks and vehicles early, uh, what, a meeting or two ago. So, yeah, we're just trying to stay ahead of the curve, it's...
Terrible.
It's a crazy world, so we'll see if we can do it. Any other questions? Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Anybody else? Okay, we will, without objection, record the vote, as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. There's no items regular agenda. Mr. Romo, Plant Commissioner, Zoning Board?
All right, great news, I only have one thing to say.
No items.
No items tonight.
You're saying, you're saying all for Steve when he gets up there.
That's exactly right.
He's got the pip of a one coming, I can't wait for that one. Okay, um, Recycling and Waste Committee, Trustee Faktor?
Yes, uh, some interesting news. Um, Groot has been very successful in getting the message across to residents that they will, that people can, residents of Elk Grove that want to get rid of, recycle, electronic items, they are doing it. They get fifty to seventy-five items per week that people are putting out to be recycled, and they are being picked up. The only catch is, you gotta call and get reservations. You just call them and tell them you want it picked up, they'll tell you when they're gonna do it, and you put it out there, and they'll get it. So it won't necessarily be the day that your garbage is picked up, or, or recyclable bin, but no, it might be some other day, but you just gotta call them, and they will tell you. I think that's very impressive, that we've got that many, uh, items being turned in by residents to be recycled, and that they've done it the proper way, like calling, so they must be reading some of our newsletters and hearing other things about this, so that they are doing it. Also, uh, we are going to have the oil, the motor oil and paint, uh, recycling day again this year. It's gonna be May seventh, and then June fourth, we'll have the paper and electronics recycling. Maybe we won't have so many electronic recyclables this year because people are giving it out to Groot. But in any case, we are gonna go ahead with that again, I'll give more information about that later. And the paint and oil one, uh, you have to be an Elk Grove resident for that, and IDs are checked, and people are turned away if they are not an Elk Grove resident. I know, Mayor Johnson, you asked about that on Saturday, and that's the answer to that.
Say that again?
That Elk Grove, you have to be an Elk Grove resident on the paint and oil recyclables.
But not the electronics?
No, because that's for the entire, uh, area.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that'll do it.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, Trustee Prochnow?
No report.
God, you're going fast. Uh, Capital Improvements Committee, Trustee Schmidt?
Yes, on items today, on the consent item, items D, E, and F, uh, were approved. These are the capital improvement projects that we talked about at the last board, at the last board meeting, uh, and these projects will, uh, start in the spring, and we'll be keep, keeping people updated on this, especially the reconstruction of Arlington Heights Road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, Cable Television Committee, Trustee Listener?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Elk Grove TV is drawing forces with the College of Dupage Public Radio Station, WDCB FM, to provide jazz, blues, and other programming as background music on our program guide during our village news segments. WDCB can be heard every day between, these are a little tough, between three AM and six AM, between two PM and two thirty PM, between six PM and six thirty PM, and between ten PM and midnight on Elk Grove Television. I listened the other day, and I enjoyed the music plus the Elk Grove news, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Youth Committee, Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie?
Thank you. I'm always the last one to talk about the scholarships, like, maybe we should move it around. Anyway, so Youth Committee has seven one thousand dollar scholarships to give away. Um, basically same as all the rest of scholarships, you can get the applications at the high schools, Con Ed, Elk Grove, and St. Vider, going into the career centers, and if not, pull it off our website at elkgrovelive.org, and you need to have it in no later than May sixth, and we will notify the winners the week of June sixth, uh, who's won them. You don't have to be going to a regular college, you can go to a trade school or something like that, as long as it's a continued education, and you need to be a Elk Grove resident. So, I'll be talking about this up until May sixth, so, um, get your applications in as quickly as you can, and, uh, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Information Committee, Trustee Miller?
No report.
There's no information in the village?
No. Do you have your Instagram account up?
We have an opening on the Praise Committee. Business Leaders Forum, Trustee Schmidt?
Yes, the Business Leaders Forum Committee members will be attending the zoning code update steering committee meeting on February sixteenth at eleven AM at the Turner Conference Room, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, we move on to Health and Community Services, Trustee Prochnow?
Thank you. Just a reminder that we have a respite program in Elk Grove Village called The Caring Place. It's located at the Christus Victor Church on Arlington Heights Road, across from movie theaters. Right now, the program is open on Monday and Wednesday mornings from nine thirty AM until noon. For more information, please call eight four seven, eight nine zero, five three three four. And just another reminder, the wa- the weather's been a little bit milder lately, but we do have, if it gets very, very cold, just a reminder that our police department is a war- the lobby of our police department is a warming station, so, um, if needed, you can always come in here and get a, get a blanket and a warm cup of coffee to warm up a little bit. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie?
Thank you. Um, we haven't showed up the date officially, but we're looking to have a personnel, uh, manual update meeting on March eighth. Um, I'll announce it at the next meeting, uh, for sure, on the time, but it will be an executive session.
And that probably be held prior to the board meeting?
It'll be held before the board meeting.
Okay. Um, Airport Update, there's no Airport Update this time, right, maybe they haven't had a meeting recently, right? Um, Praise Committee, we met last night for the first time, and again, as I said earlier, we'll be coming out with information hopefully next meeting. Midsummer Classic Concert Series Update, Mr. Knickerbocker. I'm hoping you'll look quicker now. We open on the Fourth of July with?
Casey and the Sunshine Band?
And our first concert over the Village Town Center?
Little River Band.
And then we move back for Roadie Fest?
Uh, Rick Springfield?
Very good. And we finish up here with?
Sheena Easton.
Very good, Mr. Knickerbocker, getting that song to crank off.
Mayor Johnson, I want you to know, I already heard that, that concert being announced on a radio station.
Which one?
From Rick Springfield.
Really?
They played a song, and then they said, well, if you want to see him in person, he'll be playing in Elk Grove in July, whatever the date is.
Wow.
So, again, not that we need it, but we're getting pretty advertised.
And we will notify the winners the week of June 6th, uh, who's won them. You don't have to be going to a regular college. You can go to a trade school or something like that, as long as it's a continued education, and you need to be a Elk Grove resident. So I'll be talking about this up until May 6th, so, um, get your applications in as quickly as you can. And, uh, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee Miller?
No report.
There's no information in the village?
No. Do you have your Instagram account up?
We have an opening on the prayer committee. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt?
Yes, the Business Leaders Forum committee members will be attending the Zoning Code Update Steering Committee meeting on February 16th at 11:00 a.m. at the Turner Conference Room, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, we move on to Health and Community Services, trustee Prochnow?
Thank you. Just a reminder that we have a respite program in Elk Grove Village called The Caring Place. It's located at the Christus Victor Church on Arlington Heights Road, across from movie theaters. Right now, the program is open on Monday and Wednesday mornings from 9:30 a.m. until noon. For more information, please call 847-890-5334. And just another reminder, the wa, the weather's been a little bit milder lately, but we do have, if it gets very, very cold, just a reminder that our police department is a, the lobby of our police department is a warming station. So, um, if needed, you can always come in here and get a, get a blanket and a warm cup of coffee to warm up a little bit. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie?
Thank you. Um, we haven't sewed up the date officially, but we're looking to have a personnel, uh, manual update meeting on March 8th. Um, I'll announce it at the next meeting, uh, for sure, on the time, but it will be an executive session.
And that'll probably be held prior to the board meeting?
It'll be held before the board meeting.
Okay. Um, Airport Update, there's no Airport Update this time right now. They haven't had a meeting recently, right? Um, Prayer Committee, we met last night for the first time, and again, as I said earlier, we'll be coming out with information hopefully next meeting. Midsummer Classic Concert Series Update, Mr. Knickerbocker. I'm hoping you'll look quicker now. We open on the 4th of July with?
Casey and the Sunshine Band.
And our first concert over the village town center?
Little River Band.
And then we move back for Roadie Fest?
Uh, Rick Springfield.
Very good. And we finish up here with?
Sheena Easton.
Very good, Mr. Knickerbocker, now it's starting to crank off.
Mayor Johnson, I just want you to know, I already heard that, that concert being announced on a radio station.
Which one?
From Rick Springfield.
Really?
They played his song, and then they said, well, if you wanna see him in person, he'll be playing in Elk Grove in July, whatever the date is.
Wow.
So, again, not that we need it, but we're getting pretty advertised.
Well, it's good for the roadie club.
Yeah.
Because that helped get more people coming for them. That's great, thank you. Think about it, that's, what, February, so five months away, five and a half months away. Wow. Hope it's a little warmer.
It, uh, probably will be.
Think so?
Just like in Florida.
Just like Florida?
Mm-hmm.
Is that where that tan came from?
Maybe.
Yeah? Okay, uh, Special Events Committee, our next special event will be Memorial Day. Yep, and it'll be held indoors at the Pavilion, rain, shine, hot, cold, works out well. Um, no report on our liquor commission. Report from our village manager, first off, you will knock off. Number four now gets crossed off. Three, no, actually, three, two, ten. So she didn't put the little smiley face on, it looks like a ten.
That's not as good.
Looks like a ten. Uh, Matt, make that decision. Uh, Anthony, report, Mr. Romo?
Uh, let's see, in addition to all the amazing birthdays that have taken place in February, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. Otherwise, that concludes my report.
I don't wanna tell you what some schools are doing this year instead of Valentine's Day. I won't even go there. I'll talk to you after the meeting's over. I'm dead serious.
I'm thinking I shouldn't have said it.
Okay, report from our village acting clerk. Jen?
Cook County has confirmed that Elk Grove Village will be an early voting site for the gubernatorial primary election on June 28th. Um, early voting will take place on, um, from June 13th through June 27th at the village hall in rooms D and E.
Wow, that's great news.
Yep.
That's good. Okay, that means obviously come November, we'll have the, um, big gubernatorial election, so, okay, very good. Uh, Mr. Knickerbocker, all unfinished business under you?
I don't see anything as usual under there.
Um, any new business items tonight from the board members? Anything from staff? Helen, he did a great job filling for you on Saturday. He even asked a question.
Whoa. Same one.
Yeah, but he did, he asked a question.
He wants it fixed.
He did good. Huh?
He wants those lights.
I know, I know, but he's doing good. And I know Jen said I'm set for April 13th, I think, or 15th? 26th, okay. So April 26th? Okay, we're looking forward to it?
But we're up before that.
Yeah.
Yeah, when do the trustees go?
The February 22nd.
22nd, two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today? Okay. Just make sure that you got plenty of space and all that. Okay.
We'll make sure we have plenty of chocolate.
No, I'm giving them pencils to bring. That one will, well. Woo, okay. Anything else? Do you have anything, sir, you wanna add? Good? Okay. Okay, with that said, Steve, anything further, or pastor, we all good? Okay, and look at that, 8:00 in time for the big Purdue-Illinois basketball game, for the first place in the Big Ten, coming up, so.
Or Olympics.
Huh?
Or Olympics.
Or Olympics, uh, some people, yeah, okay. By the way, if you get on quick enough, you can see the end of the Auburn-Arkansas game.
Overtime.
It's, uh, overtime, 66-66. And the reason we talk about this, because of March Madness, it's right on the corner. Got to be ready for it. Huh?
Yes.
Auburn's number one. They've been lucky like four straight games now. They've only been beat, so be interested in what happens. Okay, with that said, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Feichter, second by trustee Frankie, and we won't say we were right again with what we did with the COVID, but we will. And meeting, oh, Jen, call the roll, please?
Trustee listener?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Meeting to adjourn passes, folks, six to nothing. Folks, keep warm. Happy Valentine's Day. Meeting adjourned.